...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the January 7th County Commission meeting. And I would just remind you all that 80 years ago today was when Pearl Harbor was attacked and 2,390 Americans were killed in that attack. If you see a serviceman today, just ask him for the work they do, keeping us all safe in our nation. That's obviously a day of infamy to remember forever. So with that, I would ask you to silence your cell phones. And if you need a listening device, Carol in the front can help you with that. I would take a motion for, to amend the agenda to remove items number 13 and 20 due to a lack of a full commission today.
Make a motion to amend the agenda to remove items 13 and 20?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Now I'll take a motion to approve the amended agenda.
It's my motion.
Second, Benega.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Now, item number two is approve the commission meeting minutes from November 23, 2021.
It's my motion to approve.
Second, a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of 1,277,826, 826 and 53 cents.
Pay the bills.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any comments? No comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. We have the Planning Department Building Permits Report from November 2021. The Regional Juvenile Detention Center Statistics for October 2021. And the Mineha County Abandoned Cemetery Board Meeting Minutes from November 2021. Those are all in the folder on the end of the counter and they're also on file in the auditor's office. Item number five is personnel actions. Item A is consider a motion to approve routine personnel actions.
That's my motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Good morning, Carrie.
Morning.
Item number B is recognizing significant employee anniversaries for December 2021.
We have Teresa Evans in the Juvenile Detention Center celebrating five years of service. And then we have several people celebrating 15. We have Melinda Starley in the commission office, Kevin Keegan, Heather Richards, and Kurt Shawnaman in the jail, all celebrating 15. And then Craig Witrock and Matt Larson, the sheriff's office, celebrating 15. So our gratitude to them for their many years of service.
And I don't think any of them are here today.
I think we do. No.
Madam Chair, I think Melinda is not wanting to make a comment, but she is truly a great asset to our county.
I agree, and to our office. Item C is recognize volunteers in the county departments for November 2021.
Still, again, close to 200 volunteers. I think our official count's at 189 in seven departments across the county. We're grateful for what they do for us.
Yep, thankful for our volunteers. They help us avert a lot more expense, so. Item D is consider a motion to continue extended sick leave benefits for COVID-related absences through May 31st of 2022.
You probably recall that we made some changes to our leave policies in June to address COVID-related absences. That was extended in August. Not surprisingly, we're still being impacted by COVID. Our employees are still needing to be out. So we're asking for your approval to continue those leave benefits through May. And we can reevaluate it then, but that would bring us one full year of providing this type of benefit to our staff.
Any questions for Carrie? Motion?
I make a motion.
Second, Benega.
I have a motion and a second to extend the COVID sick leave benefits. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. And item E is a discussion on the fiscal year 2020 salaries for the sheriff, state's attorney, register of deeds, auditor, and treasurer.
So again, this resolution that we adopt each year sets the pay for our elected department heads. And the goal is to bring that back to you on the 21st. In preparation for developing that resolution, we want to talk about two sections of it. First, the base pay rates for those elected officials. The pattern has been over the past couple of years that we set the base rate for register of deeds, treasurer, and auditor at a pay grade 24, which is where our appointed department heads are at, most of our appointed department heads. And then we set the sheriff at base pay at a 26. And for our state's attorney, we've been using a level of 130,000. Just want to confirm that's still the same approach you want to take for 2022, for again, base salaries.
I see nobody saying anything, so I guess we do.
All right. So then the second portion of the resolution, really it focuses on what you want to pay the current individuals in those elected roles or filling those elected positions. So I've given you the same type of charts as you've seen throughout the budget process and in past years when we have looked at the resolution. If you go down just a little bit further, Trish, you'll see a summary chart of the different adjustments that we've made, if we go down just a little bit further yet, that we've made or that the commission's approved over the past several years. And then there's other data I provide to give you a sense of really where they compare with other department heads who are in an appointed role. And then salary survey data too, to give you a sense of what our comparable organizations pay. If you go down just a little bit further, this is the chart on elected department heads in comparison to our appointed department heads. Just as a quick note on this, all your appointed department heads will receive the 3% matrix adjustment plus a 2.5% step if they're not at a step 16. The salaries that you're seeing in that final right-hand column is the salary that all of those appointed department heads will be at in January, so January 1st of 2022. The highlighted in blue are your elected officials and that's their current rate of pay. And if you go down one further chart, this can be a little confusing. The first light blue column is their current salary in 2021. The yellow charts represent the market data for those positions. So in other words, we go out to our comparable organizations and we ask what they're paying individuals if they have a comparable role. Some of our comparable entities pay based on a flat rate. Some people pay based on a range, which is why in the base and the max column, you don't have any data for treasurer or register of deeds. Those organizations are basically setting the rate of pay for those people. I give you the same sort of disqualifier every year. Remember that this is just to give you an idea. Some of these elected officials don't really have a lot of data points and so they can vary widely if somebody is newly elected and has less experience, for example. But it gives you an idea of what our comparable entities are paying. And the final column for the chief deputy is what each of our elected people in our elected official roles, what their chief deputy will be earning again as of January 1st of 2022. Okay. Any questions for me?
Any questions for Carrie?
Just as one final thing, I just want to remind you that all the salary data that you're looking at is for 2021. So our comparable entities are doing the same thing we are and talking about adjustments that they want to make. So just know when you're looking at that data, it's lagging, obviously.
And I will just make the point too, that our elected officials do not get step increases as our regular employees do, and they do not get health insurance, correct?
They do. They qualify for health insurance, but they do not. You're exactly correct, that they do not receive a step increase.
Right. Comments, thoughts? Commissioner Bender?
I just would thank Carrie and her team. You do a really good job of providing us the information that we need to try to make a reasoned decision. I just think that, you know, looking at all of this and trying to stay with market, to try to keep our elected officials on par with where our other department heads are and just in light of the market, I think I'm in favor of being at around a 5% increase for the elected officials here that we're talking about, the five that we're talking about right now.
Madam Chair, I would support a 5% increase. I think, you know, clearly we've got some talented people and, you know, the voters could kick them out at any time that they're up for election. Of course, our regular department heads are also at risk if they are not up to snuff. But we've got a pretty good team and I agree with Jean that we should make sure that they keep up with events of the world.
I have no problem with the recommendation. The market has changed dramatically in the last year and a half and all of us, the employee people, have found challenges and we certainly want to keep up with what we have for a wonderful staff.
And I concur. So I guess you kind of have a direction of which direction we want to go. And so their next meeting, you will bring forward a resolution to set those pays for 2022.
Sounds good. I'll use the 5% to come up with the correct rates and bring it back to you on the 21st.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item number six is applications for abatement. And Chris, I will just let you read it off for me. Item number A.
Good morning. Chris Lilla Equalization. We've got one abatement recommended for approval and it's for a veterans exemption for RDID 13922. And this is for the 2020 property taxes due and paying 21. It's only one month. It's for the month of December. That's why the amount is so low, but it's valid and we want to credit that where it's due and we do have their application moving forward. So the amount is $159.37.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve RDID 13922 for 2020 property taxes in the amount of $159.37. And we need a roll call vote on that.
Benega?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Hagerger?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
I'd like to just comment about Chris here. I was reading the Garrettson newspaper and I saw that you were there addressing their city council about the changes and valuations on ag land that's annexed into the city. And I just really appreciate you taking your time to go to Garrettson.
Yeah. It was a good meeting. They had a lot of questions. Some of them I couldn't answer. Some of them are legal questions, but with their, some of their requests, I was able to give them a broad overview of what to expect and things like that. So for future annexations coming from rural into cities. So it was a good meeting.
Thank you. Then we'll go on to item number 17, which is the notices and requests. Item A is authorize the auditor to post notice of the budget hearing for December 28th, 2021, to consider supplement requests for the 2021 budget. Susan Beaman. Good morning, Susan.
Good morning. Susan Beaman, auditor's office. We request that the commission authorize the auditor to post the included notice of hearing for consideration for budget supplements. We are proposing, in total, a general fund supplement of 149,000 and a domestic abuse fund supplement of 1,0964. And then we would be bringing that back for the December 28th meeting.
Any questions for Susan at this point? This is just a published notice. Look for a motion. I need a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
We have to keep in motion here.
I guess. Item number eight, thank you, Susan. Item number eight is planning and zoning notices. There are none. Item number nine is petition of compromise of lien. There is none. Next, we have opportunity for public comment if there's anyone that would like to speak on something that is not on today's agenda. No one's moving, so we will move on to regular business. Item number 10 is a public hearing for a legal description change on an alcohol renewal application submitted by TDC Enterprises for Laurel Oaks Wedding Barn. Susan.
Good morning again. We, in the auditor's office, received a request to change or amend the legal description on the alcohol license for TDC Enterprises from, the current description is Lot A, tract 1, Laurel Ridge Edition, Southeast Quarter, Section 23, T102N, R49W, Mapleton Township, 102-49. The proposed change is to include that, to have that description remain, but then add Lot B, tract 1, Laurel Ridge Edition, Southeast Quarter, Section 23, T102N, R49W, Mapleton Township, 102-49. We do have a representative of TDC Enterprises here today, Tyler Childress, if you have questions for him regarding this request.
Are there any questions for Susan right now?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
I'm not sure I fully understand the net effect of this, this motion. Does it just expand the territory that the license is applicable to?
Correct. So currently, the current license is for Lot A. You can see that over there on the right side. And the applicant is, and the license holder is requesting to add B to the existing license.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Susan?
Just to further clarify, my understanding is the applicant is planning to build a separate facility that will also be marketed to the same, as a wedding venue on that piece of property. So the net effect is basically that the alcohol would be able to serve, be served at the existing location and at this new facility that is going to be constructed.
That is our understanding as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Lot A has the existing wedding event venue on there.
Any other questions for Susan? Thanks, Susan. This is a public hearing, so I would ask for the proponents if they would like to speak. If you would just give your name and your address.
Hello again. Tyler Childress, 476-77, Flipup Creek. So yeah, we want to use the liquor license on both Lot A and Lot B inside of the city. There are many different properties that are like this, that have contiguous properties, contiguous legal descriptions. Put my phone out here quick. So for example, and this is kind of getting the nuts and bolts of things, but like the Alliance Building, for example, they have Lot 4, Lot 5, Lot 12, Lot 13, Lot 14A, Lot 17. They have multiple lots comprised under their, under their liquor license. The city does it based on...
For that example, are there two separate buildings where alcohol is served in two separate buildings?
Yes. So for example, out in, in Mineha County, Blue Haven Barn, the atrium have two separate buildings that are serving alcohol on the same license. It's also happening in Lincoln County under Meadow Barn and the one behind it as well, the Veranda. Inside this, there's multiple buildings as well. The Sanford Pentagon, many of these go off, the city goes off the USPS postal address. The county uses a legal description, so it's just kind of the same but different. So their contiguous parcels are touching each other. It's the same ownership. It's the same use. They're operating independent as one, if that makes sense. The employees will be at the same locations at both locations. So it's just an extension of the same business model, the same thing. We've talked to our attorney. He sees it as a valid reason, they're operating the same thing. Yeah. Do you have any questions, I guess?
Any questions for Tyler?
It's more of a distinguishing difference. That's the same. That makes sense.
Any questions? Commissioner Bender?
I guess I'd have a question for Susan. I'm just curious if Susan, if we, do you know for the, the Blue Haven Barn, do you know if we have, if we did the same sort of thing out there?
We actually checked into that. The, the difference with Blue Haven with, than this scenario is the Blue Haven Barn is on one parcel where this is two separate parcels. So that would be our, the difference between the two.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Tyler, I just want to make sure I understand that the second location is going to be operating the same venue, if you will, as the first.
Yeah. So when we came earlier, a couple of months ago, we just did an extension of the plan development. So the restriction the county has is the same. We can't operate a different business model. It's the same business model with the same type of thing. It just extends that to additional offering for clients we can't meet today. So there's, there is no difference, the same, the liquor license holder will be at both. Inventory will go through both. It's like having, you know, an outside bar, for example. It's just another extension of the same operation.
Only on two different parcels?
Well, this is a non-vacated, sorry, a non, this was subdivided prior to me owning this. And it has, the previous one has not been vacated. We first tried to apply with the previous legal description change to the non-vacated one, but we were advised that we shouldn't do that or didn't want to do that. So we took the county legal advice to apply with both. We're going off the understanding, and if you start looking at all the City Falls license holders, which again, both are states licensed that are issued, or states that oversee this, there are many properties. The Alliance, the Sanford Pentagon, Sanford Fieldhouse, Shields Iceplex, Blue Rock, many of these ones have multiple different parcels that are just designed, when they apply, they apply with a USPS legal address, not a legal description. So if they have 27 different ones, they can put them together, as long as it has one address from the eyes of USPS, then that's what's being approved. So same, but different way of doing it.
Thank you.
I think everybody's thinking. Commissioner Barth?
I'm pondering. Gerald, being on the, on the fair board, do you know if they use their liquor license on more than one plot? I think that there are only three. We have three parts out there. I know they use it in maybe more than one building.
Right.
But do they use it in more than one?
I don't know what the legal parcel responsibility is out there without looking. Is it two?
There's two.
We're talking about the fair.
Yes. Off the top of my head, Carol Moller, commission office, the fair. Most of it's all in one parcel and then there's that small amount that is used for leaf drop-off and stuff that is a separate parcel, but the rest of it's all in one.
Have your own barn fire or leaf fire and have beer in the same time.
Don't want to give people ideas. So are we going to finish the public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Is there anyone else that wants to speak in support of this? Is there anyone that wants to speak opposed to this liquor license change? No one's opposed. So it's back to you guys.
You get to have an opinion too, Madam Chair.
I know, I'm still thinking.
So does our state's attorney have an opinion? I'm passing the buck here.
I don't know that he, I, do you have any legal opinion? I don't know that he does.
Madam Chair, Eric Boge, Deputy State's Attorney. No, I don't know that I have an opinion. I would just encourage the commission to examine the unique aspects of this in the fact that there are two separate parcels, two separate buildings, as the appropriateness of the location aspect of the statutory requirements of your decision. So if you have any more specific question, I'm certain I'll try to answer that.
Tyler. Yep.
So the other, the other route to go if it's not approved today, which I hope it is, but we can vacate Lot B. That then puts that particular property into one 30-acre parcel instead of two different parcels. So that's already, our concern with that is Lot B still has a housing eligibility. And as the county has found out, sometimes those get lost in the development of properties. And so we don't want to lose that particular housing eligibility from that Lot B. So our plan is still to move that to the east side of that. But that's why we're not sure we want to vacate that Lot B to make it all one parcel. Again, I just, I have a list here of multiple liquor licenses inside the city that have had that approved and operate in that way. You know, the Shields Iceplex, for example, has one, two, I mean, many of them. The Sanford Youth Football has many. Blue Rock has multiple. Alliance Building has multiple. The Sioux Falls Stadium, multiple. Even the Sheraton has an addition. The addition is a separate parcel and they still serve in both locations. You know, the people can walk throughout those. Convention Center has multiple. So I think it's, again, I just want to reissue, it's the same process. We're not modifying or changing the customer. The operations are the same and such.
Commissioner Bender?
Well, I mean, I think that, I mean, you can talk about the city, but we're obviously not the city. And so, and we haven't done it in the county. And so I think that's the thing that's causing pause, is that it is slightly different than what we've done in the past. So then you always have to try to think a little more critically about it and what possible precedent that is for other situations. And my crystal ball's a little cloudy this morning, so I'm not sure I can necessarily figure that out. Is there, is, I mean, I personally feel more comfortable if you guys were one parcel. And I don't know that necessarily, that that means you lose that housing eligibility, but I might be missing something there.
Yeah, there are current other housing eligibilities that are being lost that the county is being sued on currently or investigated on it. Because once they do that, they don't know where the separate housing eligibility should go. So yeah, we, we tried to apply. When we went with Lot B and did the replanning or rezoning before, we didn't even know this was going to be an issue, to be honest. And then we, when we went to start the process, the great ladies down there figured out this might be an issue. So I guess we are, we understand your concern, that you don't, future precedents and stuff. These are all state. We reached out and taken the advice of legal counsel from the county. And we wanted to apply with the pre-subdivision legal parcel as not been vacated, but we were, said we couldn't, because we applied with that. And that was, that would include both the three-acre parcel and the 20 acres as one legal description. So that was what we tried to do, to make it one parcel under the eyes of the liquor license. Does that make sense or am I going to get more cloudy?
I'm not sure I totally tracked with you, but I kind of track. I, I tracked enough to know that you're trying and that, that if things get complicated, which I know that that's the case, so.
I think it would have been helpful to have planning here because, and they're not, but because you can transfer a building eligibility to contiguous land if you own it. So why would we just not move the building eligibility over to A and then get rid of B? I don't understand what the problem would be.
Well, because they're a different zoning process and, you know, I can, I've had multiple conversations with Scott about this as well, so I agree.
What is, what is A, what is A right now as in zoned?
Plan development. So, so the city does not have that as an option. That's what's creating complexity. So both are now plan development.
Oh, I see.
Yep. And they don't have that particular zoning resignation, so. But we, we see this, again, we have a counterpart, a competitor that has two buildings that are operating under the same organization that are by each other, that are operating like this in the county. It's, the only difference is the parcels. But again, we're operating the same entity. They're contiguous, same ownership, operating independently as one. So we have reached out to the state on the liquor license and they've advised us that they don't have a position because it comes down to local process.
Tyler, have you started construction on that second location?
No, we've wanted to, but we're part of our operations, part of the business model needs to be able to have this. So no, we have not yet. We want to. We've widened the road to get in there, the access point, but have not pulled the permit because this is an important piece to the process. We're hoping to break down November 1st.
I guess my question would be, and I don't know if this is a motion at this point, but is there a possibility if we approved this and restricted it to the same use as your original purchase?
Yeah. I mean, that, that's, that restriction is already on my plan development. So you can put another, the same restriction again if you want to, no problem. In the minutes, if you want that recorded. But I'm already, my plan development is already, has those restrictions already set on it. So I can't operate a bar. It has to be a wedding event facility or event facility of some sort. So that, that's already a restriction on my land use. But yes, you could put in the minutes or whatever you feel comfortable, I think. I don't know.
Well, I guess after I listened to all the quote competitors that you listed, I don't want you to be at a... I don't want you to be at a disadvantage, frankly, in expanding your business.
And we didn't even understand this legal hoop to have to jump through. We didn't even, didn't come to mind.
So I had a motion?
I'm going to make that a motion.
I have a motion. Is there a second? The motion, you want to repeat the motion?
To approve the alcohol renewal application with the change of adding, it would be Lot B, correct? Parcel B, as an extension of the current operation.
With the current rules.
With, yeah.
Commissioner Bender?
I'd second it with a comment.
Okay.
So I just, you know, want to clarify, and I don't know that it needs to be part of the motion, but just clarify that, you know, we're doing this with the idea that it's the same business, contiguous property, same use. And so it's a very specific set of facts that we are being willing to do this in this situation. It might not apply to a different set of facts in the future.
I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Burr?
I'm not going to vote for this at this point. I, I think that it's, I would like to look into it further. Planning and zoning hasn't reviewed this to my knowledge. And I think that, you know, the idea of, this is going to be a precedent in our county. And I'd like to have the opinion of that department and maybe a little further review as to setting a precedent like this.
I have a motion and a second, and we'll have to have a roll call vote.
Burr.
No.
Bender.
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hyberger?
Aye. Motion passes three to one. Item number 11 is consider a motion to authorize unused portions of the service budget appropriated, appropriations to be used for operations expenses at the auditor, election, and jail budgets.
Susan Beeman with the Auditor's Office again. We have two departments this year that are asking to use personnel savings to cover other expenses within their departments. The first one is our Auditor's Office elections budget. We are asking to use approximately 3,000 in department personnel savings to cover the cost of our software and licensing line. The software and licensing is used to cover and maintain our elections equipment. And then our jail is asking to use an estimated $392,700 of personnel savings to help cover the additional contract services budget. As you've been briefed a couple of times throughout the year, our jail medical expenses were higher than originally budgeted due to our change in medical contract as well as some catch-up from prior year claims from the previous provider. And so we're looking to use those salary savings as well as, there's an additional $100,000 on that year-end supplement list as well. And you have memos attached from both of those department heads.
Are there any questions for Susan? Look for a motion.
Would move for approval. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor will have a roll call vote.
Burr.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hyberger?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Susan.
Thank you.
Item number 12 is a briefing on the grant invitation from the MacArthur Foundation. Our Judge Hauman, who is probably ready to run off to court. So thank you for staying and giving us this briefing.
That's all right. It's worth it to be here today. Good morning, Robin Hauman, presiding judge for the Second Judicial Circuit. Because of the work and partnerships of the Safety and Justice Challenge, Minnehaha County has been invited by the Urban Institute to submit an application, which is here at this point, a letter of interest for an equitable housing demonstration project. Only 23 jurisdictions in the United States have been invited to apply for this grant. 10 jurisdictions will be interviewed, and out of those 10, only four will be selected to receive a $3.1 million grant from the MacArthur Foundation that will be administered by the Urban Institute. The grant is aimed at supporting community-driven efforts to reduce homelessness and jail incarceration rates for people who are at heightened risk for both. The four jurisdictions that are selected will receive that $3.1 million grant. They will also be eligible for a $15 million pool of program-related investments that will be distributed in the form of loans. This letter of interest is due December 10th, and we were notified of this opportunity just before Thanksgiving. So considerable legwork has been done over the last week to 10 days to come here today. We've pulled together a number of community partners that we believe would be the best partners for joining this work to address these issues. Should this jurisdiction become a grant recipient, the initial phase of the project would be to bring community partners together in a planning session over the course of eight or nine months to determine a bottom-up process for the best way to address homelessness and jail incarceration rates for this target population. The community partners would be asked to look at all available resources in the community and develop a housing investment action plan to address the issues. Examples of these strategies might include emergency housing, crisis stabilization housing, and traditional housing programs related to already existing housing opportunities, such as our Safe Home. As we know from the Safety and Justice Challenge and have numerous other endeavors in our community, we have a unique ability to bring the right people to the table to address issues in our community. And I think the same would be said for this opportunity. In fact, we've already reached out to a number of those community partners, including the mayor's office and the Accessible Housing Advisory Board. We have Carrie Benz, who's on that board with me here today. And we also have Amos Abu, who is the Housing Clinic Coordinator for the City of Sioux Falls here today, showing support and encouragement for this project. A number of other grant opportunities have been suggested to us over the last couple of years, but none has excited me like this particular opportunity. Like many of you, at times over the past couple of years, I felt a little bit granted out. But I think this particular opportunity is one that deserves a really good look at it. It addresses something that we struggle with all the time, and that is housing for these populations who are involved in the justice system and are homeless. The proposal at this time is to recommend that the grant be implemented by Ahab, which is the Accessible Housing Advisory Board. Ahab already exists and includes key players that need to be at this table. The proposal would also ask that Minnehaha County serve as the fiscal agent for this grant. And if the budgeting documents allow it, we would be recommending that Minnehaha include, as part of the grant, that we receive, that the county receive indirect funds from the grant to cover the expenses of administering the grant. I'm not aware that that's been done previously when the county has applied for grants, but I would certainly recommend it because I know that administering these grants and serving as the fiscal agent is something that does take time away from employees of the county to administer those grants. So I would recommend, if it is available, if Minnehaha County is selected to be a part of a grant recipient, that we do look at being reimbursed for serving as that fiscal agent. So with that, I'd entertain any questions that you have. If I can't answer them, hopefully Erin Serska, who's also here, or Carrie, would have the answers.
And we also have, like you said, Mr. Abu.
Mr. Abu is here as well.
And also a board member from Ahab, who's, I apologize, I forgot your name. But we have several people here that could speak to it if you have questions for other people involved in this. And at this point, it's just an ask to, it's just an invitation to...
To submit a letter of interest.
Yes, yes. So it's no commitment at this point, other than a letter of interest. Would you like to hear from anyone else?
I certainly would support the letter of interest. Obviously, this is a significant issue in the community and the surrounding areas. So I have no problem with supporting that. I guess at some point, when we get a little further down the road, we'd probably like to have a operating budget, so to speak, that we have to discuss.
Yeah, the grant itself is $3.1 million. The first $800,000 would support that eight-to-nine-month planning process with the final total of $2.3 million to look at implementation of the policies that the committee determines during that implementation process, what works best for our community.
I'll remind you of the MacArthur Safety and Justice Innovation Grant that we received quite a few years ago, which was $50,000. And with that, we started the beginning of the Triage Center. And you see where we are now with the link. That all came from something very similar to this through the MacArthur Foundation. It's just that seed money to get us started. So Commissioner Benega, Bender, excuse me.
And I would just say, because I also serve on the Accessible Housing Board, that this would just support work that we're already doing. I mean, these are issues that we're already looking at. You know, housing is an issue for this population, and it's an issue for others in our community. And we're looking at that whole spectrum, trying to come up with affordable and accessible housing. And this is a particularly difficult segment of the population where can significantly enhance their ability to re-enter our society and be productive if we can find stable housing for them. So I'm very supportive.
I'm Chair. I'm sort of flattered that the MacArthur Foundation thinks of us. And certainly, I will obviously support this. And it's a very intractable problem that we have in many areas. And I really look forward to seeing what we can do.
I need a motion.
I'll make a motion too.
Is it a motion or is it just a briefing?
Oh, you're right. Sorry. I'm looking at a different line. Yep, that was just a briefing, and so I guess you get the go-ahead to put in that letter of intent.
And I'll go now and finish work on our letter of interest. Thank you for allowing us to do so.
Thank you very much. On to item number 14 is consider a motion to reappoint Nikki Gronley to the museum board for a second three-year term. Bill Hoskins. Good morning, Bill.
Good morning. Bill Hoskins, Director of the Siouxland Heritage Museums. Under the joint cooperative agreement between the City of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County, we have a museum board. Minnehaha County appoints four citizen members to that board. Appointments are for three years, and they're term limited at two consecutive terms. Nikki Gronley has completed a one-year, or three-year term, the first term, on the museum board. Her attendance has been about 90% for board meetings, which is excellent. And I would request her reappointment.
Any questions?
Make a motion to reappoint Nikki Gronley to the museum board.
The motion?
I have a second.
Motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And then we have another one. Item number 15, consider a motion to appoint Chris Brockvelt to the museum board for a three-year term.
Yes. Chris is a project manager for Co-Cart Hazard Architects. And Chris got familiar with the museum. He was actually the project manager for the Museum Resource Center project. Did an excellent job there, very practical, down-to-earth individual. Grew up in the Sioux Falls community, graduate of SDSU and I think the University of Nebraska.
I'd make a motion to approve that appointment also with a small comment.
I have a motion.
Second.
A second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Item number 16 is consider a motion to authorize Minnehaha County Emergency Management to apply for the 2022 Homeland Security Grant. Jason Guirman.
Good morning, Jason Guirman, Minnehaha County Emergency Management. This is a grant we've been doing for numerous years. And we really rely on this, the law enforcement really relies on this for equipment. We've been trying to get our radios up to snuff for, when that change comes here shortly. So we don't know exactly what we're going to spend it on this year, depending on the amounts. But most likely, we'll try to complete our radio project. So we're just looking for approval to apply for this.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. We need a roll call vote.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Hyberger?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Jason. Item number 17 is consider a resolution authorizing submission of the Brand Improvement Grant, the big grant fund application to the South Dakota Department of Transportation for three bridge structures.
Good morning, Commissioner. Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent. First item I have for you is looking for commission approval to submit three applications for three structures. Two will be replacements. The first one to be replaced would be Structure 50-237-120 on 256th Street over Slip Up Creek. The other replacement would be Structure 50-272-030 on 247th Street over a tributary to West Pipestone Creek. The third one would be a deck replacement on 50-272-030 on 247th Street over a tributary to West Pipestone Creek.
This has been a great program for Minnehaha County, and so we will continue to put out applications. I need a motion and a second.
Move for approval. Benega?
Second.
And a roll call vote.
Benega?
Aye.
Burr? Bender?
Aye.
Hyberger?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 18 is authorize the chair to sign the South Dakota DOT Bridge Improvement Grant Agreement for Preliminary Engineering of Structure Number 50-273-090.
Once again, Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent. This is to sign the agreement with South Dakota DOT. It is a big grant that we did. We're successful. This is preliminary engineering for Structure 50-273-090 on 253rd Street, Nettleson Township. This bridge is currently in our five-year plan for construction in 2025.
Make a motion to approve that.
I'll second with a comment.
I was going to say, we have a motion and a second. This is one that the Bridge Improvement Grant gives us 80%, and we pay 20. Is that correct?
Correct.
That's correct.
So it's just a case in point for why it's good to apply for these, because the next two are ones that we have been successful in obtaining, and they provide tremendous value to the taxpayers of Minnehaha County.
Absolutely. Do we, did we have a motion on that one? I'm sorry. We had a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Burr?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hyberger?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Number 19 is authorize the chair to sign the South Dakota DOT Bridge Improvement Grant Agreement for Preliminary Engineering of Structure Number 50-330-159.
Once again, Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent, just like the previous one. This is preliminary engineering for one we were successful on. It's on 487th Avenue in Red Rock Township. This is also in our five-year plan for anticipated construction in 2025.
Move for approval. Benega?
And a second by Burr.
Yeah.
All those, oh, excuse me, roll call vote.
Burr?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hyberger?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Steve, for the work you've been doing for us. Do you have any update on the build-out out there on the new building? I know we saw pictures a couple of weeks ago. I have not driven by yet.
Yeah, the weather's been very advantageous. Most of the footings and foundation walls have been placed. They're still working on some of those in our maintenance shop. But we had two days of steel delivery last week, so it was exciting to see Grunters and posts showing up. The plan is right now to start steel erection on Monday, December 20th.
Wonderful.
And we're, we are looking at samples for the pre-cast and still anticipating that pre-cast would be delivered later in January.
Okay, fantastic. Thanks.
If you get out there, let me know. I can show you around.
Sounds good. When it's warmer.
On a warmer day.
Than yesterday or today.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you. Onto item number 21, consider a motion to accept the request for qualifications from Chuck Sutton Auctioneer and Land Broker LLC for a public auction of the 1900 West Russell Street. Tyler.
Good morning, Tyler. That Commission Office. As part of the process to put the surplus land at 1900 West Russell Street up for public auction, the commission direction was to find out some more information about some auction companies. On August 27th of 2021, we chose the public auction option, and RFQ was sent out with a deadline to respond as November 19th. We received one response to that RFQ. That was Chuck Sutton Auctioneer and Land Broker. As you can see in the table below, they outlined some of the, I outlined some of the key aspects of their proposal. One, probably the most significant, is the commission of the sale would be a 3% of the total final sale price contingent on a plus 1% if the buyer is also a licensed realtor, which my understanding, after speaking with Jared Sutton, who submitted the proposal, is, that's pretty common. So we'd probably be at a 4%. be at a 4% there. The request for the commission today is to accept the RFQ to move forward with discussions on auctioning off the property at 1900 West Russell.
Any questions for Tyler? This has been a long process. I'd look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve. Bender?
Second.
A second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 22 is authorize the chairman to sign a consulting agreement between Bill Garnos and Minnehaw County for the JDC Population Trends and Projection Report. Tyler?
Good morning, Tyler. Clatt Commission Office again. This is the next step in our process towards evaluating the Juvenile Detention Center and its future. Tegra has been in contact, in contact with Bill Garnos, who has done previous jail-related studies and criminal justice-related studies for the county, to perform the study on the trends and population projections for the Juvenile Detention Center. The entire scope of his proposal and his project will include an assessment of the juvenile detention population trends and profile, development of a regional juvenile detention population projection, development of a forecast of juvenile detention capacity requirements, and then a final report, which will be provided to the commission. The total cost of this request is $5,760. I would also note that there are some contingent, as far as any travel reimbursement that might occur. We don't anticipate that, though. And the request, again, for you, is to authorize the chair to sign the agreement for consulting services.
Any questions? Motion?
Make a motion to approve. Bender?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Tyler. Item number 23 is Minnehaw County Commission Liaison Reports. Are there any reports for this past week?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Burr?
Last Thursday, the museum board met out at the Irene Hall Building. And a wonderful Christmas potluck was hosted by Bill Hoskins and the staff. It's one of the great advantages of being liaison to the museum.
I think there's more than that, but that's great. Any other reports? I'll just mention, oh, excuse me.
No, that's fine. Commissioner Burr, and I met this morning with the Public Advocates' Office, and she gave us some projections that she is right on budget for this year and catching up with COVID-related cases. And frankly, it was a very positive report. Looking forward to future information. But it was a good time to spend some time catching up. And as Burr has already mentioned, we did not get breakfast, so.
You should have brought your own.
I could have. Should have.
And then I'll just mention that Commissioner Karski and I attended the Legislative City/County meeting this past week, Thursday, early in the morning. Carol and Tyler are also with us. And we just discussed, the city and the county have gotten together for the last, I don't know, five or six years, and put together a list of resolutions that they support. This commission is aware of what those are. I believe there's like 13 or 14 on that list, remember for sure, that are joint, so that we use our powers along with the municipality to support those resolutions. There's also outside municipalities that also participate in that, from Lincoln County and Minnehaw County. I'd say we had a good one-hour meeting with breakfast. So put that on your list of places to go. And Carol mentioned it in our newsletter this last week. We did have the City of Sioux Falls, Mark Cotter, talked about the water reclamation or water treatment plant updates that they want to do and expansions. And then I think it was just kind of general conversation. I don't have anything specific to share. Obviously, they're open to anything we have. We talked a little bit about ARPA money, and, very briefly. So I think that's kind of where we are. Did I miss anything, Carol? I think so. Okay. Is there any new business? Is there any old business? I would ask for a motion to recess until, what do we need? Five to 10, I was going to say 10 o'clock. We'll see if, we'll see if we're ready to go by 10 o'clock. That gives you about five minutes. Need a motion to recess.
So move. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We'll try for five minutes.